Okay, why don't I call the meeting to order then? This is a meeting of the Town of Warren Benny Commission. The date is Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and the time is seven oh three P M. The first item on the agenda is agenda changes. Do we have any changes in the agenda?
We have an addition at the end, under, after subcommittee updates. I guess probably pretty much under new and other business. There will be some probably new and other business, probably after new and other business. Carol Chamberlain wanted to have a conversation with you guys.
Oh, great.
She came to me with a proposal and I said, I think you should have a conversation with the P C.
Would it involve, would it be connected to the report by any chance?
No, I do have news on that.
Okay.
No, it had to do, it has to do with the town plan.
Okay.
Has to do with what?
The town plan.
Okay, well, we're interested, we're always interested in proposals.
Okay. So that's the only agenda change.
Okay, if you'll remind me, I can't find a pen at the moment, Ruth, so if you just. Oh, thank you, thank you so much. Oh, it's so sharp.
His colors.
You better be.
That was picked by Julie. I let my assistant pick the color for this year.
I like it.
Okay, then the next item on the agenda is review and approve the previous minutes. I apologize, I haven't read them yet. Will you give me one minute to read this?
Of course.
Did that meeting recording get logged? I don't know if I did it correctly. That was the meeting.
As far as I know, it did, yeah, I think so.
I ran it and recorded it.
I can't remember, I'll have to go back and look. I have to make sure that I. As far as I know, I think when I came. When I came in, I did look. So.
Okay, we'll be inspiring on two years.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I had that recall.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Yes, do I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
I'm not promoting.
Do I have a second?
Hi.
Okay, all in favor, please say hi.
Hi. Who was the second? Which Jim was the second?
All right. General public comments, fifteen minutes max. I don't see any members of the public here. Or there, or there. And that brings us to item four, the status of the draft looters P C report. Did you indicate you had an update?
Yes, I had a, I had our conversation with Sharon this morning.
Hmm.
And she's more than willing to do it. She knows that we have a budget to do so, which she said sounded, sounded, you know, adequate. She did say to me in her, in her conversation that there are things that have come up from the state and, no, not new things, but in the way in which, you know how there's this other thing?
Yes, yep.
And the fact that on this here, we have referrals to our, our actual statements and our regulations. They also now want included a statement that, yes, you are, you have complied with section forty-four, twelve, blah, 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 in the, in the state statutes. So in other words, they basically want you to check off that you're consistent with what the state statutes are.
Can we have a blanket statement that says that?
I don't know. I, I, let me back up and tell you that I said to her from the very beginning, I said, this is my concern. I said, I think that as long as we are referencing the right things after the changes, as far as the sections in our, you know, that we currently have on this report. I said, it's a five-page item. I said, I don't want, I'd like to avoid a seven, eight, nine, ten-page report. And she understood that. But she said, this addition of having to state in this kind of report on the statutes adds something else, but that could be a one-liner.
Okay.
Okay, I'm.
I'm most concerned about the length and more about the timing.
Yeah. On there. But we also have to integrate some of the things from the Department of Housing and all that other stuff, or whatever it was that.
That is the additional attestation that either could be.
Yeah, and she said, see, this is stuff that she hasn't encountered before. They're changing it up. They're, they're. And, but there are three other towns who have done this recently. And so she was going to call to find out how they did it and how it came through. The other thing that came up, so she's going to get back to me on that. Her sister in Maryland has recently, who lives by herself, I guess she's divorced, single, whatever, has been diagnosed with breast cancer. It appears to be early, but she will be going down from time to time. But she says she's got more time now than she had this last fall. Um, she feels that once she has a better handle on how best to approach this, since it hasn't, it's different than what we've all done for years. She will, she will let me know and she'll get it done as soon as possible. But that soon as possible is, I might not know until maybe later in the week.
Oh, later in the week is.
Or next week, you know, I, I just, I told her, I said, I want you to, she knows. I said, you, I, I came right out and said to her, I said, the P C is champing at the bit, big time, and has been for some time. And she goes, I know, she, she understands that. She's very aware of that.
Yeah.
And I said, if.
This is like something out of Franz Kafka. Just kidding, ridiculous.
And the select board comp, you know, at a minimum, the select board composition is changing in March. I mean, we really ought to.
I know.
Get this done. I think a couple of members have decided they're not.
Andy Cunningham's leaving, Luca Ubel is leaving.
Who is? Oh, Luke is, oh, I thought you said something else.
So what, do they do elections in March, is that?
Yeah.
There'll be.
There'll be two new people, hopefully.
People in the select board. And it's harder, it's hard, frankly, planning com, you know, planning commission composition could change. So, I mean, it's, and that means less, you know, people with less familiarity with the looters.
Bear in mind that the plan is that once we get our hearing done, it's going to go to the town attorney for review. Then it will go to the select board. So if there's, if there's two new select people, it will be time for them to get caught up on it.
Hmm, okay, well. I don't have a better answer. I just, I'm not sure that anyone on the planning commission has the time or competence to really do it.
I made.
But if.
I thought you were gonna make.
I'm gonna work with her. And I had that conversation with her. I said, I don't want you to feel like you have to carry the whole thing. I want to learn from you. And I said, let's see if I can't help you with this to expedite it. And I specifically said to her, keep me posted as to what you find out from the towns and what your schedule is going to be like, so we can get moving on this.
And I will say, Ruth, I'll say this, if she does not give us a reasonable timetable, I, I, I'll jump in and help work with you on it, because I, you know, I, you know. I just, I don't think we can wait indefinitely and I'm finished, you know, I.
That's why we.
I had a big paper due for an L L M I'm doing, so I just, I had no time. I don't, I cannot, I could skip, you know, my, I don't have to take a class in the spring, so I can have to work on this. If she's unavailable.
No, she is available, she is available, she's.
Time, timely, well. Because I really want to get this done before, I want this off of our plates before town meeting.
And I think, oh, that's, oh.
You think no way?
No way.
Oh, yeah, no, I think it will, and we talked about that.
You think so?
Yeah, I said.
That's a month away.
That's six weeks, roughly. I said to her, I says, now the middle of January. I said, I'd like us to be able to, at least the beginning of May, uh, May, the beginning of March, be able to warn for our public hearing. That's our goal. We did specifically talk about that.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is not gonna, you know. I want it done too.
I know you do.
Because I know you guys are all, you know.
Totally, no, I'm just frustrated, I'm not frustrated with you, I'm frustrated that.
So that's.
That it's not getting done. But if, if, if really that her timetable is, is.
If it changes, but I will tell you this, she can, she can work for Maryland as well, if it's necessary. But she plans to be here more than not.
Okay, all right.
It's in the early stages for her sister. It should go well, but she hasn't heard that from, you know.
Keep you posted, and if I need to get involved, but now I have the time to do that. Okay, anything else on item four, any questions from anybody? No. Item number five is the status of the short-term rental ordinance. As folks know, I did not attend that select board meeting, but I read Jim Craft's, you did, right?
I did too.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
I have a few notes.
Yeah.
You go first, I'm gonna look at these, if you remember.
Um, all they did was they continued to kind of wordsmith it and cut down on specific content. It wasn't, I don't think it has changed the, you know, form, fit, or function that you really intended to begin with, but it has changed the wording.
And my understanding is, from Rebecca, is that it is currently with V L C T for their legal to look through.
Okay, great.
So that's even a step ahead from what you all.
So they, they, that, that implies they finished their words.
They're, they're.
Yeah.
Take comment.
Um, I mean, they definitely finished, they moved through it, and they seemed pretty sort of reasonable, like they didn't, they didn't cut as much as I thought they might, based on the first meeting I attended, I guess, is how I would put it. There was something that came up regarding a record-keeping requirement that they were not in favor of that got struck. I have like a note on that. It was paragraph nine and whatever version they had, but I don't, that might have been somewhat significant. I don't know if you remember that specifically, but it was.
I do remember, we, I mean, in order, you know, to enforce some, to be able to enforce, if there's a violation, you generally need to have people produce records, and therefore you generally have a record-keeping requirement in, in your rules.
So I think that got struck, which is probably one of the more significant things.
See what V L C T has to say.
Other than that, they spent a fair amount of time on the fine amounts and ended up, I think, looking at an example from Stowe that worked. It was like one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, as far as first, second, third offense. But that's from memory, I'm not, does that sound right?
Yeah.
That sounds, um, and then the fee, they went back and they figured, I think they went with two hundred on the fee.
I don't know whether you're, whether you, if you're full-time or whether you're.
Yeah, they didn't do two different fees. Um, I don't know how important that is to us, but I think that they ended at two hundred and they did sort of some math, just to make sure to cover the costs. And that's what I have.
That's okay. I'm in Ruth, so it's at V L C T now, do they, then I guess V L C T will provide them, the lawyers at V L C T will provide.
That's my understanding, and I'll, I'll follow up with Rebecca to see if she, how long they've had it and if she's heard anything.
So what does that mean, it's with V L C T?
The Remotely of Cities and Towns, we are members of, and they provide legal advice and opinions.
And so that's like free consultation, we throw it over the fence, they go, that's horrible, don't do that, or they say, you can't do that?
Well, it's interesting, I mean, in an ideal world, V L C T probably would have proposed like a model short-term rental ordinance, but they didn't do that.
Okay.
So, but they do have lawyers, like Ruth is saying, who'll provide. Now, I don't really understand why they didn't go to the town lawyer versus V L C T.
They're saving money.
Saving money by going to V L C T.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they are going to the town attorney, I think, on our land use and development rents.
Okay, thanks, I just.
And I will tell you, just as an aside, and I've heard this from other people, that as good as, in, in my experience, um, the V L C T legal office has been good, but not great at times. And I've had other people say that they, they are sometimes not impressed. So it depends, I guess, on what it is, because I think they hesitate to be too middle sometimes.
Yes.
I guess maybe is what it is. I mean, when I tried to get an answer from them about how to deal with permits coming in after the select board warned their hearing for the land use and development rights, and I heard something from them, very different than what I heard from Brandy. I went back with another question, specific thing, so you're saying that blah, blah, blah is not the way to do it? Another, I got specific with them, and I still didn't get a straight answer back, so.
Right, I've had, I've had some good encounters with their lawyers.
Yeah, I did too, I mean, I like.
Where, you're right, they're like, we're just not going to, we're not going to recommend this, and we're not going to opine on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of thing.
So, but.
Okay.
But I will follow up and see what's going on with that.
Okay. Um, well, it sounds like it's out of our hands in some ways, I mean, it's.
At this point, but I'd like to know when we're going to get it back from them, what the timeframe is, so that you know that it's coming back.
But it doesn't come back to us, does it? Don't they just pass it?
No, it shouldn't.
I don't feel like it was coming back.
No.
And they actually kind of deferred to us on that, and I thought that we had discussed that it would be most efficient for them to just take it to final and get it approved.
I think so, I mean, if they're, you know, I, you know, I, I'm off the record, I mean, of course, we're on the record, but I mean, we have three lawyers on the P C, so I feel like wordsmithing, we're probably good at wordsmithing, but if they want a wordsmith, that's their, that's their ability, so they can.
Right, it's not like we would have been able to then make more changes.
Yeah, like, what are we gonna do, say, I just, you know, I disagree with the fee you sent?
Yeah. Add that provision back in.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get the sense that we had that option, so, and we talked about them, just, so we told them to just go ahead and make a clean copy from their edits and move forward.
And actually, what's posted on the town website is what was sent to V L C T.
Great, okay, well, good, thank you for the update. Glad it's moving forward, in whatever form it is. Um, that's something. P C town.
Can I just say one thing about that?
Of course.
Um, I, you know, I've been talking to a million people about this issue. And the thing's bubbling up is that the, what's, what, what Airbnb and Verbo and these places have secretly enabled is more people owning second homes. And that's the real problem here. Um, so many places are being taken out of the housing pool because now almost anybody can own a second home.
But doesn't cost anything.
Because you, because now you can rent it. Before, second homes were things that sat idle up on the hill, and they were really expensive as a result. But now, all of a sudden, you could, I, you know, I can own a second home in Denver, Scotts, Maine, and I can rent it out when I'm not there. And the only thing I have to worry about is my stuff getting trashed. But we have a place in Long Island, and we rent it out. We don't rent it out short-term, we rent it out monthly, but it's not, it's not a problem. And we make, we're able to own this place because of that fact.
Yeah.
And, um, so, so it's not really, I mean, we, we can, we can do something about this with a short-term rental ordinance, as you pointed out. But, but the real issue here is now everybody can own a second home. It's really cheap. In fact, it's a moneymaker to own a second home. So you, people borrowing money, buying a place in Warren and saying, hey, I can pay this off, no problem, buy me a new house.
It's investment property.
Well, and also.
It's investment property.
Yes.
You have sort of entry and mid-level homes that are now more likely to be second homes, that never would have before, because the level of wealthy of people that were owning a second homes, they don't want that, they don't want a two thousand square foot or fifteen hundred square foot house.
So, you're, you're right, the, the original people who owned second homes here own big ones.
Right.
And they, and they had a second home here, and it sat idle for the longest time. Even those guys, though, are renting their place out now. And, and, and as you say, little of places that used to be, you know, no way, we, you know. All of a sudden, they're, they're in this giant pool of places that people can rent. I, I, it seems to me that the, that the, um, that the people who would want to have the S T R rental more than anybody else would be the hotel and motel owners. They gotta be being affected by this. You know, instead of staying at just sugar bush in, let's rent a house, you know, cook for ourselves and stuff, it'll be really great. And, and not only that, the restaurant people, the same, same way. Whereas you used to stay in a hotel and go out to a restaurant, now you stay in, in S T R and you cook for yourself. You bring food.
Or go to Kitchenette or whatever and bring it home.
You know, yes, you know, yeah. So, so that's what's kind of making, you know, that's what I'm sort of thinking about.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I, and this goes to the, sort of the question of data, which was, did we have, do we have enough data to say we have a problem? I personally feel like we have enough data from, even from what Granicus has told us, that there's five hundred to six hundred short-term rental units in Warren, which is an enormous number, and that they rent out for, on average, a very high rate, that there's enough, there was enough data, but other people, and I think other people like Ma, like Macon on the planning commission have been like, you know what? We don't, we need more.
Yeah.
We need, we, let's, 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 or maybe Macon, I don't want to misrepresent Macon's view, but, you know, we can wait for the data, or.
No, I, I, thanks, Dan, I, I'm, no, I'm tracking all this, I just got home, by the way, all, I apologize for being a little, um, but I'll be at my desk in a second. I, I, you, you got it right, Dan, except for the fact that I, I'm all, all in. I think we just ran into enough questions and people worried that we're trying to ban everything and just leapt to these conclusions where I think we stopped and said, look, let's just all agree that we don't know enough about the situation among things like homestead versus non-homestead and otherwise, that I think will really inform this. But Jim, you put your finger on it, you know, you know, these.
We lost you.
We lost you, Macon.
And it's really up to us to figure out how we feel about that. And I feel pretty terrible, but yeah, I, I'm all for getting the data, if that's all we can do.
Yeah, and that was certainly the select board's perspective, was that, you know, we need more data, we need more data, so. And that was actually, you know, to be honest, that's where the M R V P D started, let's get the data. So, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't mean to imply that's an illegitimate view. I just felt like there was enough data to do maybe more initially than we're gonna do, but that we're gonna do something is a really great, is a great thing.
Sometimes you have to take baby steps.
Yeah, sometimes you take baby steps. Okay.
I, I, I kind of look at it that we ran out of condos that, right there. That, that kind of second ownership was kind of filled by an affordable unit up at the mountain or just off the mountain that someone could, could, could own, and they, they did somehow, sometimes rented that out, maybe for longer periods, maybe not overnights, but then we stopped building condos. And all of a sudden, okay, well, there's still that demand, and it has to go somewhere. And so it goes to less, you know, what I would say is kind of normally affordable housing. And those, and they get impacted by that, right? Is that all of a sudden, okay, there's none of those left, what else is out there? And there's all these houses that people just kind of used to rent for the season, put a bunch of people in there. Well, now you fix them up a little bit, you can rent them every weekend, you can make probably two or three X what you used to make. I, I don't know what you think about that, but it's.
I feel like people are going out of their, I mean, it's, it's a smart move. My son is doing it in Portland, you know, hey, you, Portland, Maine, I got both Portland. You, you look at a place and say, wait a minute.
I can.
I, I can buy this and I can cover my mortgage and actually make some money on, by doing this.
And in fairness to the people who want more data, this is really, this is the crux of it.
Yeah.
Is how many, we know we have five hundred, six hundred short-term rental units. How many people? But how many, how many of those are ones that were taken out of the full-time residential? We don't have that, and fair enough, if you want to.
And it's, and, and Jim, just to double down on that, I think it is a smart thing, but it's one thing to live in a community and invest in another property in that same community.
Yeah.
Be in charge of that as an investment, and a lot of people came to us saying that Airbnb is critical supplemental income, and, and we need to hold space for that. But there's a lot of people, and I think what you're getting at, who's, maybe they're going to meet with their financial advisors, saying, you know what you should look at is punk, you know, plunking some of your money in these investment properties, because it's a good return. And we've got a lot of Airbnb property owners who don't live anywhere near us, full-time.
A lot of them are LLCs, exactly.
We need to, we need to understand what that divide is, and I think that will catalyze a lot more public interest in this issue.
Yeah, good. Well, you missed the first part, Macon, but, oh, maybe, maybe you heard that, uh.
I'm here, sorry.
Did you hear Ruth say, so the select board has made their changes and.
Oh, I heard that, I heard, I heard the looter stuff too, and I already went through the transcript of the, um, select board meeting, so totally, and the two hundred, I think, is accurate.
Okay, good, great. Um, so now can we move on to the next item? So, okay, not at all, helpful, Jim, to your perspective, and to what people in town are talking about. Uh, number six, P C town annual report twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I don't have a draft for you, and I'm blaming Camilla. She sent Wild Bill in today to ask me some questions.
Wild Bill.
Bill White, who, uh.
Oh, I know Bill White.
Barbecue Bill.
Buffalo Bill?
Buffalo Bill.
Buffalo Bill.
You don't know him, well, he's been around for a long time.
For a long time.
Yeah, yeah, and he can talk, and so, and then other phone calls came in. So I will, either tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest, I will email you the draft. I have no pride of ownership, I'm gonna just try to give the highlights.
Yeah.
Wordsmith it, add subtract.
Do we have to vote on it?
No, I don't believe you do, no. It's just, it's just, for years, even when Myron was here, I did that report, and people looked at it and didn't care, you know, P C people.
I'll make a few tweets.
Somewhere along the way, all of a sudden, I was doing it, and I did it one time, and, and I think it might have been Jim said, well, you know, we should probably really look at that, Ruth. I said, okay, fine, you know, but I got used to just doing it, but I will send it to you.
Yeah, and I can't, I won't, I won't be able to help myself, I'll make a few tweets.
That's fine.
But I appreciate, I appreciate.
It's fine, it's, it's, it's a draft, it's your report. I have, as I said, have no pride of ownership, it's all, it's, I just want to get it all down.
Perfect, it'll be a big gap.
Okay.
And when do we have to get it finalized by?
Um, not until, what's this, this is the thirteenth, sometime, I think it's the middle or end of next week.
Okay, so we have time, we have time.
Yeah, you've got at least another ten days.
We don't have time to talk about it as a whole.
No, you won't, this, no, you won't have time at your next meeting.
Okay, maybe, do you want to, do you guys want to take a couple of minutes and just talk about what you would like to, what you think along those, you, you know, this is boilerplate.
It just sounds like what we did all year.
Yeah, I just do the highlights.
And it's gonna be land use development regulations and what we're hoping for in the next year, that's it.
Well, it's gonna have your, your vision thing in June.
Yeah.
It's gonna have the two people we lost and the two people we gained.
Okay, the short-term rental ordinance.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Other priorities that, that.
The priorities, well, yeah, I'll probably throw those in there. The priorities are gonna be obviously attached to the town plan as far as those sort of things that we need to check in on, on the town plan, some of them, not all of them, but we want to make sure that if we feel it's a priority, that we haven't stated correctly in the town plan.
Yeah, well, consider whether, you know, we started with, like, what are our six, five or six priorities? Consider whether, you know, whether it should say that P C identified five or six, you know, these are the six priorities.
I may have even done that at the last one, because we started that before, so I'll have to look at the last report, see if it's in there.
Um, awesome, so yeah, when you get me a copy, I will.
Yes, well, I'll send it out to all in case anybody else has any.
That's a great idea.
Two cents, they want to.
That's an awesome idea. Um, seven, subcommittee updates.
Well, I can tell you what's going on with the town garage.
Please.
Um, we're meeting, you know, it was a tiny little group, Rebecca and Andrew and myself and Devon and.
Is it Camilla or Devon?
Uh, it's been Devon, Camilla hasn't been there.
Oh, okay.
Been not around for a while. Um, uh, the architects are doing a great job, Andrew's really on board with everybody. What was the word you used, Jim, referring to the current place? You said it was sort of cruel, it's something like cruel and unusual punishment for the people who live there. I can't remember the word you used, but it was perfect for the current situation. They're hoping to have a estimate for town meeting, so we can have a bond.
Good, good, good.
And I, you know, I'm a little worried about it because of the current sort of overall tax situation and stuff, but this is something that it has to be done.
Daringly needed.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not just needed. We, the, the current place is whatever that.
OSHA is gonna shut us down.
Embarrassingly, you know, it's punishing.
OSHA will cut it. Well, just say sorry, you can't.
So anyway, uh, the architects have done a really, I mean, it's a really simple, you know, box, but it has what they need in it and it's going to make working there something which isn't so brutal. And it's in a great place and they've done a wonderful job with the site to keep it all down in this hollow and so that the neighbors will be minimally affected by noise and, and, you know, they changed the road going in. It's, it's a good job, you know, and it's, they've been incredibly conscientious. They have a group doing landscape, they have a group doing the architecture and they have a group doing all the mechanical systems. Three, three groups, all pretend, they're always on the, the, um, the Zoom calls and they're, uh, it seems from architect's point of view, I, they're doing just what we want them to do. That, that's the deal. They're gonna have some options, you know, um, I mean, one of this, one of the ideas we went into it was, could this thing have, you know, a photovoltaic array on the roof, for example? And, you know, it's a big expense and that's something which we could say, okay, well, we're not gonna do that or whatever. So there'll be some options in it, but, and I think the select board will choose what they want to go to the voters with and hopefully it'll be ready for a town meeting.
Good. Do you have anything on the visioning, on the mapping and stuff?
Yeah, um, well, last time we spoke about Sam Robinson and, um,
Getting them in here for.
Getting them in here for, to discuss some potential opportunities for, for housing for township.
Yeah, I have that under my new another business.
So I, some bandwidth opened up for me with my teaching gig at Yes Tomorrow finishing up at the moment. So I plan on digging further into our mapping and meeting with Jim and then, um.
Yeah, Joshua and, um, Sam are gonna be with us at our next meeting in two weeks. Um, and it's just gonna be them. Unfortunately, we have another person who has some, um, development background that could be interesting and insightful. Um, who originally was gonna be able to join us, but we're gonna have to see her at another time. Um, because I think she'll still have something that she can educate us inside, you know, give us some insight as to what development of that kind of a project, which is a lot smaller than what she deals with, but I think she could still shed some light on some things.
Great. Well, that'll be a nice meeting to.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask on the visioning? Um, or just more generally, so let's say on the, on the downtown, you know, the vision for the village.
Development.
Yeah, downtown, maybe overstating things. Um, do we have asks? Did we, you know, you know, maybe this is a better question for Jim, but you know, do we, did we sort of formalize our asks for the select board, like, you know, the, 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 sort of the village improvements or the village? We had to stop midstream, you know, because, you know, the, the Belgian block was originally intended to go.
Well, that's part of, the, part of the, um, report from the visioning thing that we gave to the select board had all those, had all the things that we felt they should look at. And it did occur to me the other day when somebody said, hey, um, who's gonna keep pushing this?
Yeah.
You know, who's gonna keep this in front of their noses? And it, it would be smart, I think, for us to say, hey, uh, as the planning commission, you know, we want you, remember, we gave you all these things to be thinking about, we hope you're on the case.
Well, we've got our first quarter, we can do our first quarter meeting and, and have that conversation.
Okay, yeah, that's a good idea.
And just a reminder that these are sort of our priorities for the, for the village improvement.
It's, it's what came out of the visioning session, you know, we said, hey, here are the things, here are the main five things that we thought were stuff that the select board ought to be thinking about down the road.
Yeah, sort of from the townspeople through the visioning session through us to the select board.
I think that would be good to keep in front of them and I think it might be good to even put a, you know, like, what's the price tag and can we start building up a capital fund? You know, if it, if it's, if it requires a hundred thousand dollars and we don't have a hundred thousand dollars, can we put in? Can select board, do you start putting aside twenty thousand dollars a year for the next few years?
Um, that's, that's definitely an idea. Start a capital fund to get some of these things taken care of, I, you know, I, um, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be losing our sort of most fiscally conservative, uh, select board member. Then maybe we'll get somebody who's even more fiscally conservative. I don't know, we'll see.
Well, I think this year in particular, with the way things have been the, the past twelve months.
Yeah.
In general, I think they're being really conservative because of the hike in property taxes. And they've just here, heard a lot of noises about the whole education thing.
Yeah.
And I think that's why they are. Now, whether a year from now, two years from now, that will calm down, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand that. It's just, you know, there's so many things we don't have control of. Educational spending, or we have some control, I suppose, if people want to keep voting down the hardwood budget.
Well, interesting to see what happens in the next six months.
Healthcare costs, you know, those, you know, there's.
And it's not just Vermont, it's everywhere.
Yeah, so I do wonder, uh, you know, it would be a shame to defer these things in perpetuity and why not, you know, why not, maybe the capital fund is the only way they get.
No, we should also see what.
Well, if I could, if I could offer just an idea on this and I, I, it's, uh, it's just a direction, but you know, I, I know I'm a broken record on the differentiation on the short-term rental between homestead and non-homestead. But I would just point out that I think the path to a lot of resolution on our fiscal issues is gonna run through, um, a new dynamic between out-of-state and in-state, um, real estate um, and general taxation. And in this regard, I think Warren's kind of at the tip of the spear among a few other communities. And so I think it's, it's in some ways, we kind of are this like rural sleepy town that's like, oh, we're also ski town. But I think in terms of like the real dollars and cents and what the future of the state looks like, things like the short-term rental policy are actually connected to this larger conversation in a really powerful way. And I think we, we should model that accordingly. And that's why I'm kind of a squeaky wheel on that side, but, um, I appreciate you making that, you bringing it up because it is a big, big deal on the school system and things generally.
Thank you, Macon. I, I actually think we're lagging. I don't think we're the tip of the spear. I think many of our surrounding towns have adopted local option taxes and.
Oh, I mean, like we can be. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I, thank you for the correction.
And short-term rental, there are, there are.
Yeah.
There are revenue sources that other Vermont towns are accessing that we are choosing not to. And, 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 go ahead, Jim.
No, but what I, what I hear you saying, Macon, and I, I think that's gonna, I think that's going to, um, to, to come, to come up pretty strongly is out-of-state ownership of in-state property. Um, I, I realize what you're saying, it, it, I, I know you're a broken record on that thing, but it's something is good to have, keep reminding us. The people who are investing in Vermont who don't live here. And, um, and I think when they, when they start doing, read, when the legislature finally gets, wraps its head around, um, doing something about the education tax, that's gonna come up. And, uh, you know, I mean, property tax, that, the out-of-state thing is, that's gonna come up, I believe. And, and we'll see how it ties, we'll see how it ties in.
Yeah.
This might be a point to raise with the select board at that meeting. Um, just based on, at the meeting last time where they were discussing the STR, um, they were very clear that the fees were only to cover the costs of running the permitting program. So it could be worth.
I mean, the registration, yeah.
Yeah, presenting Macon's view to them as maybe broadening our view of this as being a potential like solution to other fiscal problems. I don't feel like they saw it that way.
Well, yeah, I, I mentioned that, right? I mean, Killington was pretty creative. They, they funded their fire chief with it.
Yeah.
And Camilla, and, and I think the whole board was pretty, no, we just, we want to make sure that we're only funding, you know, the Granicus purchase and that, but.
I disagree with that and we.
That's not looking forward.
Yeah, we made our case.
But they, that, that's because they wanted to get the data, you know?
Well, that's right.
You gotta, you wanna get the data.
First step.
Then they can say, wait a minute, this is what it looks like here. Let's, let's slap some lemmies on this.
That's a good point. Yeah.
Again, baby steps.
Potentially.
Baby steps.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Sometimes you do have to start running versus just walking. Depends what's behind you. Well, you know, I definitely made the point to them and, you know, right after the, you know, that, that, um, that Moretown, for example, after the flooding, you may have probably saying this, that Moretown after the flooding had to, had to come up with millions, you know, before FEMA ever comes in, Moretown has to start funding projects. I mean, you know, on its own, out of its own, you know, and, and they, you know, it, it would be really helpful. We're, we're not insulated from flooding. We're not insulated from a bunch of issues, of potentially expensive issues that, you know, no one likes taxation or fees, but I mean, I don't know, I think looking long-term at least, and may, and I think that, you know, baby steps, I think that's right. Baby steps and not, not dwellers. Yeah, so we'll take baby steps and we'll get there sooner or later.
You know, just the last thing I wanted to say on this for, uh, Jim, you said something about how, you know, a lot of the people investing in this community are from out of, out of state and I, um, I understand what you mean from a real estate investment standpoint. But I think we also are very conscious of, um, a lot of people are trying to invest this community in terms of working, spending their time here, um, full-time and that's impossible. Um, and they're leaving and we're seeing businesses stop because of labor. Um, and, and I think we're reaching a point now where pretty soon tourists aren't gonna be able to get their latte that easy. And I think when we start seeing this impact, some of the like, you know, I, I, back in DC when Congress would fight about budgets, it would always wait until FAA was affected and they couldn't get their flights home before they hit a resolution. And so I think there's like a way to look at the sort of bumpy road we're on and actually find these like small little things will actually get the attention um, as we start to be, you know, not be able to support the movie theater and we're not doing the massage parlor and oh, by the way, we can't do coffee after four, you know, whatever these are.
Now we can't, we can't see a doctor.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so, um, so anyway, I, 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 there's just a lot of different factors pointing this way and, and, and that's why I'm really excited that we're, we're talking about it all and I think people are gonna pay attention to it and they should.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, any other points from?
Well.
Other, oh, sorry.
Well, on, on, on subcommittee updates and Macon, I don't know if you are aware of this, but this kind of falls into your category. I know that there is a desire to get a new and better town website. There is one piece of that website, though, that is going to be much better in sometime in the next few months.
Hmm.
And that is our GIS.
Oh.
Our GIS, which you can.
Updated.
It's not that it's act, it's not updated.
Yeah.
It is not updated. The company that, um, we've been using has fallen down big time for the longest time. We beg and plead and we, you know, we, you know.
The tech company or the GI, like Vickery Hill or?
No, Vickery Hill is our actual overall website. I'm telling you, when you go into the website, the GIS, just to get to the parcels. That's a third party by the name of CDM and they're out of New Hampshire. And getting things, I mean, it's, it's awful and it affects this office, you know, when I'm trying to do zoning stuff. And obviously the listers are nuts. And I will applaud Julie Burns for taking the the initiative to find a better one. And they've got money, because it's really the listers that take care of that. And they found one that actually Waitsfield used. She's called and talked to other people. She's talked to a couple of different vendors. And, um, it, I'm very excited, you know, about it. So that will help at least help what's existing, Macon, be better until we get a whole new website. And I just wanted you to be aware of that as far as a communication thing that will be serving the public better as well as our own employees here in the office.
Do we know what the new GIS mapping software company is?
I think it's CAI. As I said, um, Waitsfield uses it.
That's really helpful. Yeah, I'll just do the website update on, along those lines and that's a good reminder, uh, Carol, and you know, um, I don't know a lot about GIS and mapping stuff. Um, and Adam, I know you do, so I, for as much as that update was good for me, I hope it's good for you too, but I will, we'll pay attention to the GIS side. Um, on the overall, um, website, I had a good meeting. I think I told you guys last time we met with Rebecca Campbell about the RFP. And I, um, I owe her, um, um, a requirement stock and I'm behind on it, but it's fortunate because now I'm gonna do the Granicus meeting before I write that up. So we have a meeting with Granicus as part of the STR. I think you alluded to that earlier, check-in on Wednesday. Frankly, I, I'm kind of excited to see what a company like that is gonna demo, just so I can think about that as I'm thinking about like the overall site and how I might put those requirements. So, you know, I'm trying to pull silver lining, uh, but I just didn't get much done over the holidays on the, on the website and, uh, uh, and so I guess the next step would be to get that requirements document back to Rebecca and I'll try to do that in short order after the Wednesday meeting. Um, and I'll also, uh, Dan, I was thinking, just after that Wednesday meeting, I'll just send some thoughts of like what I heard, just so it's written down in case we had any some talking points about like, you know, I think we just had a couple of times where it's like, oh, but she said it in the call, but like, if we can just capture it, write it down, I think that'll be a really useful resource to share. Um, I'm happy to put that on. Uh, but that's not Zoom, is it? Is it in person?
No, I think it's, they always do web, they always do web.
Oh, great. I just, I just realized it's probably, okay, that's all. And I'm, yeah, so, okay.
I mean, Granicus.
And I don't have an update on the Affordable Housing Fund. I don't have any update on that.
Um, before we, let, let Macon and Ruth reminded me, yes, we have a call with Granicus. This was Granicus.
It's a kickoff.
Granicus, and this is, I, 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 this is the sort of the background I don't understand because Granicus, someone new from Granicus contacted, we've been dealing with Samantha White until now. Someone new from Granicus contacted Rebecca White and said they wanted to do a demo. So I don't know if that means that.
It's Samantha White, it's Rebecca Campbell.
Sorry, but it's not Samantha White who's doing the demo.
Right, right.
So I don't know if that means staff changed at Granicus?
No, I bet you Samantha was more of the salesperson and this person's more of a process person.
So, so the select.
It's my guess.
So you're thinking this, so you're thinking, well, I, I just want to make sure, and you may not know, but Rebecca made it seem like it was Granicus that made the reach out.
Yes, they did. Now that they had the contract and a check's been sent.
Oh, so they got a, so I didn't know that. So a contract was signed and a check was sent.
My understanding is, yes, we got it so that we could use the money from twenty twenty four.
Well, that, that's big news. I didn't realize that we had signed a contract.
My understanding is they did sign a contract so that we could use the money we budgeted in twenty twenty four in twenty twenty four.
Wow, so things are really moving.
Occasionally, occasionally it does happen.
Holy moly, that's exciting.
So this is a kickoff. So this is why Samantha's done her job. We've got the contracts, you know, and.
Wow.
And the check sent.
And you would be forgiven for not, like, not making a lot of like intuitive sense. You know, it's, it's a little bit of like, just take yes for an answer at this point, you know, it's like, this is, these are great.
This is kind of, I think, just kind of like, okay, you're now part of the family. This is how we get going.
Right, it's like I've been waiting for it a long time. Someone's like, here's chapter seven.
Nothing happens, nothing happens.
That's my understanding.
And suddenly everything happens.
That's my understanding.
All right.
Hopefully that's the same thing with a gazebo.
But like, one of the things I'm thinking about this demo, right, is like, well, so what exactly is the town paying for, right? Like, we, we don't have to limit it necessarily. we don't have to limit it necessarily to like short term rental. Like if if we're paying for something and like the way their pricing model works, like you can add another form for this much more, another page for this much more. Maybe that's in, that's relevant to the larger website conversation, you know, particularly if we've already paid for a big chunk of it. So I don't want to overlook that opportunity.
Then you should ask and find out.
Yeah, it's not gonna be my first question because I'm laser focused on getting this STR registration, registration through the um needle.
Wow, it's, oh, I had no idea. Who reviewed the con, you know, the?
I bet I don't know. It was the select board and and I I've got this just little bits and pieces from Rebecca.
Wow.
I'm now remembering that they mentioned that at the meeting.
Me, that guy wrote the book.
Remembering that they mentioned that at the meeting, how they were going to try to rush a check out to them before the end of the year.
Well, holy moly, that is really exciting. Okay, what's next? Um, okay, so there are other, there are.
There's new and other business.
First of all, I just want to say before we move off, anyone else who's interested, please join that, let, you know, let Ruth know or let me know. Please join the call if you're interested. I mean.
Are they, is, are they discussing the um registration system for STRs or the new website?
The.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is, this is Granicus just in in their, their.
Wednesday at.
One thirty.
Wednesday at one thirty.
But they do all sorts of stuff.
And Rebecca and myself and then Julie will be here
Oh.
on the screen, you know, with this on the screen with the Zoom thing. So if you want to join us here, you can do that.
I'm sorry, you mentioned what it's about, but just to be clear, it's like Granicus discussing.
It's a kickoff thing. I don't know the details.
So probably last time they sort of did a demo of their, this is how it will work in practice. And here are choices. Depending on what our ordinance says, these are sort of the steps that an applicant will will walk through. And then there's other choices of add-on modules, like a complaint function. I sus, I expect they will do a demo similar to what they did previously.
I think that there's, there's two, there's two things I'm looking for. I think one will be like the user stories is what I would call it. So user story would be like Ruth, how does this work for Ruth? What is she looking at? You know, how does she know how many like outstanding registrations to review? Like, how does this tech make it easier? Because one constant concern and it's legit has been the administrative burden of the system, right? And then it's like, well, tech helps the Mr. Burden. Explain to us what that looks like. So that's one. And then, of course, the other user story is I want to register. How easy is it? I think the other big area I'm going to be really interested in is the scraping. You know, because I think there's been a lot of conversation about Granicus scrapes data off all the websites and they're able to provide an estimate. They're also able to use this data to help us identify perhaps units that aren't registered that we should reach out to and make sure they're aware of the requirement and so forth. And I have a sense of what that looks like, but I, that's going to be where I ask, I think, some real, some of my questions, just so I'm able to to come back. You know, Jim, I know you've raised this a couple of times and I just feel like I don't, I want to be really confident in those answers because I think it'll be great data, but it's also something that kind of freaks people out sometimes. And, you know, it's just, we need to be able to answer it.
Okay, I can tell you what it is. Am I saying it loud enough?
Not enough for me.
Yep.
Okay, um, and Samantha White was CC'd on this, but this came from somebody by the name of Erin Thames.
Who?
Erin, E R I N, Thames, T H A M E S.
Erin Thames.
And it says, hi Rebecca, I have recently been assigned as project manager for your host compliance and open forms implementation with Granicus. I look forward to working with you. To get started, I'd like to schedule our kickoff call. This is a thirty minute meeting to cover team introductions, project approach, and next steps.
Oh, you gotta be on that call.
So that's, that's what it is. It's not going to be, it's not going to be highly detailed.
I'll, I'll, I'll be there, but I think we're lucky that we have folks like Jim and Macon who actually understand a tech implementation.
You're the wordsmith, they're the tech people, right?
Yeah, so we're lucky that, but I will certainly be there.
I think it'd be good if you were on that.
I think it would be good if anyone's.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, I'd probably be able to join.
Okay.
We can get invites to it.
Well, yeah, I will find out. As I said, I know that we'll be here, but if you want to do it from home, I'll make sure that you guys get the Zoom thing.
Okay, what's next?
One more thing. Oh, go ahead. Under new and other business, I just want to let you know.
Other business yet, we're still on.
We're still on subcommittee.
Subcommittees. So then I'm going to direct this at Michelle, who did a wonderful update that you put after our last meeting. Are you willing to continue doing it?
Yeah, I'm planning on it. Um.
Awesome.
I got some good feedback. I don't know if anyone else who hasn't mentioned it has comments, but um, yeah, that's kind of why I'm trying to take notes and then just in the next couple of days, I'll write up a similar post.
Oh, this is part of the communications thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just did a, I tried to keep it relatively short and high level, but just to sort of give people some tidbits about what we're working on, really.
Great.
See if we can pique some interest.
Awesome.
So, yeah, I'll keep doing that.
Thank you. Yeah, that was great.
The other thing I could do, I actually saw the faced in. Somebody posted a faced in planning commission post and I thought they might have been copying me. Um.
Is this from Port Forward?
Yeah, and they they also included Zoom info for their next meeting. Um, so I could do that if people think that's a good idea.
Getting engaged.
Yeah, okay.
You should, is it the same Zoom link every month or every?
No, no, I do a new one every month, every meeting.
So maybe I do my summary post in the next couple of days and then once you have the Zoom link ready and send that around, then I would be a second post just saying.
Can you just schedule it now, Ruth, to get it?
I could, I could do it whenever Michelle wants it.
Okay, so if I'm ready to, I could reach out.
Better if it's all in the same way.
Okay.
You know, people's heads are there.
Okay.
I don't, I don't mind doing it early. I may not send it out on the agenda or post it on the website, Zoom.
But I can just email you for it, okay?
Yeah.
And then I can add that to the post as well.
If they read something they're interested in, they have the link, they put it in their calendar, they're more likely to.
I can do, I can do that.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I'll keep doing that.
What other, what are other, what are the other? I mean, one, one thing on um Andy Cunningham at the Mad River Planning District made a comment that the garage site might be difficult for affordable housing due to land stabilization issues. And he was skeptical.
I I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, and I don't know how to investigate that.
Like, maybe there's a, there's a river that goes through there and you gotta be fifty feet away from the river and there's some hillside there.
I think that's what he was referring to.
So there's, there's some issues, but but a, a multifamily unit could go nicely into that, into that, where the current garage is without any problems. I don't.
Yeah. I would, this is, I was going to ask this question when you talked about the town garage earlier. But um I've seen plans or not plans, um but like drawings that were sort of a product of some kind of consultation about like the potential si, a number of units on that property, where they could go. Do you know what I'm talking about?
It could have been either you were sellers.
Yes.
And so I don't know if you know, remember that process, but it seemed to me like we wouldn't have gotten that far if someone hadn't said, well, it's it's plausible, right? Instead of saying it's impossible. So I just wondered what due diligence has already been done along that line.
Not much, not much. I mean, some really broad brush ideas came up. When we first floated the idea of getting the town garage out of there, we said, hey, how many units could you put in there? If they were done like the trailers that are sort of in that area now, you'll probably get six or seven or eight or nine units in there as trailers. But but uh that was, you know, that was to almost twenty years ago, we did that. And and now, now we're thinking a lot more affordability wise, if you did a multifamily unit in there with maybe six or seven or eight units in one building, whoa, now all of a sudden we really can get somewhere. So, I, you know, who knows what will end up happening here, whether you, whether you, uh, whether somebody can get creative and do something with a lot of houses or one place, or I don't know, you know, we'll see. But i- in the contract that these get, that the architects and designers have for the, for the new town garage is decommissioning the old garage. So that site under the, in the budget is decommissioning that site completely and turning it back to, you know, zero.
Yeah, an open parcel.
Yeah.
Could we include in that cost like a feasibility study for future use of the old garage site? I don't know how that works, but.
They, they have a contract already. That those guys already have a contract and that's not in their contract.
I don't want to make it any harder, dude. I believe me, I don't want, I was just curious, like if there's a way to kind of get a feasibility, get that baked in, but but.
Let's talk to, let's talk to um, to Sam and Joshua next week, next meeting.
Maybe that's where they can help.
See what they.
It feels like something people spend money on like old grants here and there just to get an engineer to.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Exactly.
I, the point I was going to make is at the town meeting, when you're talking, I think, and we've said this before, I think, when uh when we're talking about the future garage and the future location, I think at the very least, we should have a top line answer that it is feasible to get affordable housing into the pa, I think I just, I want to have people thinking about what it frees up, not just uh getting excited about a garage, you know, and I think get pulling this information together, what we have, even drawings and how we're working on feasibility. I think that's a really good um piece of work.
Really? Um, I'll just conclude that by saying Andy said somewhat cryptically that there may be other town of land nearby.
Same kind of.
That might be if the garage site is not suitable, that's not the only site. Now, I didn't, I didn't know what exactly he meant.
Talking about, well.
I don't think we're in a position to really turn away any, so I think we should take it all.
But as, as Macon is saying, that if you combine, we're moving the garage here and we can maybe do affordable housing here, that's a win-win instead of just a win.
Totally.
And and I, that's a, that's a more compelling argument for passing.
You're going to get a lot of people paying attention to this project, wanting it to be successful if they see what it makes possible. They don't care about a garage. I mean, I get it. It's important. I know it's important, but that's just not, that's not the sexy issue. And so I'd love something for people to hook on to.
Yeah, good, good.
Yeah, it doesn't seem, I mean, we, you just like do some test bits on the, on the site and see what the soil bearing capacity is and what type of foundation type would work well for the size of affordable housing complex that you're looking to place on that particular site. Uh, so I think it's, now is not the time to be um doubting it until we kind of look into it a little further.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't want to come off as negative. I just, I just heard that, yeah, I just heard that and I thought maybe when we, you know, obviously the town garage is the, the view of the planning commission, the te, is the town garage site is the ideal site.
Yeah.
If it's feasible, um, but when we talk to Josh and Sam, maybe it would be good to town garage site and other, you know, and other potential sites.
We also own a piece right across the, the street.
Tiny.
That's all right. It's still, if you can get a du, duplex in there, Jim, okay, come on.
I, I know duplex. I'm, I'm thinking about.
On top of, you've got a whole bunch of.
Twelve.
Right, that's on the left, across the street.
Real affordable housing.
Everyone counts, everyone counts.
I know.
Anyway, so but, I mean, I think we can, there's probably room to talk about the garage site and other sites that might be suitable for housing in the village.
Yeah, there's a lot to figure out, but I think like Macon's touching on, it's nice to have people excited about the potential of of.
Yeah.
Might help them support the bond issue.
That's right.
Exactly.
That's what I'm, there you go. Now we got it. Yeah, I just want those drawings up on an easel at the town meeting, to be honest, like and Jim standing next to them being like, you know, here's the story, how we put them together and like, you know, I, I would think that would be cool.
He wants you at the town meeting standing next to your easel.
You know, telling us that, you know, the, the hall, yeah.
Can we combine that with the Central Park between Se, the Town Hall and Central Park?
What's, what's next? We're getting off topic.
Okay, sorry, it's only eight oh seven to the. Um, so that was our subcommittee. Listen, anyone has anything else to say on subcommittee updates? That's our subcommittee updates, which brings us to new and other business. And I think the first item would be Carol has a proposal for us. No?
I have a real quickie. I just want to throw in there.
Oh, well, Ruth has a quickie for us.
Um. You know, Sam's going to be with Joshua at our next meeting. The meeting after that, which is February tenth, Sam's going to be back again for the Mad River Valley Planning District data report.
Great.
We want you to be aware of that. I want to check it off my list. All right, now, yes, Carol had reached out to me in an email during the holidays and.
She hasn't changed your expression.
No, but hopefully she will. I saw her in person at the faced in PC meeting that I watched forty five, fifty minutes up before this one, uh, which was interesting. Um. She would like to have a conversation with you guys about whether she, whether you were interested in her um background and talents and skills in helping with the updating of the town plan. I think that's correct, Carol. Come join us.
Is, is my microphone working? Okay?
Your microphone is, but we've only got your picture. We don't have you.
Yeah, my camera is not working. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So you're, you're stuck with the.
Especially your mouth isn't moving even though you're talking.
I know, it's pretty amazing. My other job is ventriloquy.
Did I say that correctly?
Go ahead, Carol.
Um. When Ruth mentioned a meeting or so ago that your town plan was coming up quickly enough for re-upping that it might be time to start working on it. I just, you know, I'm interested in working with towns on their town plan, um, you know, helping to put a survey together, helping to organize the updates. Et cetera, et cetera.
You did this for faced in, right? You were integral in the faced in town plan update, is that correct?
Well, I was, I was on the planning commission and faced in always just did their town plans on their own without any kind of consultant help. We just, we just tackled it as ourselves. So, yeah, I've been wrapped up in it from that point of view. And right now I'm, I'm working with Moretown on, on their town plan update.
I mean.
So I.
And how do you keep up? How do you keep, I mean, like my made, I'm, I'm interested, Carol, and I, I've heard great things about your work. How do you keep up with like all the legislative changes and all this, all this stuff coming out of Montpelier that makes it um difficult to read?
You know, a lot of legislative changes are more related to the regulations than the actual plan. But yes, there, there are things that the legislature comes up with that says, oh, you, you're doing a town plan. Now you need to include X and next year you'll need to include Y and just need to keep track of it and make sure it's included. And you know, one of the reasons I'm, I'm kind of thinking this would work is your town plan was pretty heavily revamped last time around. So I don't think you're looking for a major rewrite of the town plan. I think it's more of an update. Right.
You got that.
Just twigs.
Major rewrite or dirty words around here.
Well, I, I just, you know, I didn't live here the last time, right? And I know that this has been mentioned a few times that it might just be an update and not a major rewrite. And to me, I'm, I have, you know, I have an interest in taking a, a hard look at what's happening here. We've also had a pandemic. Our real estate uh situation is very different. Um, and I think even in some of these conversations about, you know, out of state, in-state, these are really big conversations and the town plan is exactly where it should go. Um, and so uh I just wanted, you know, given that we did spend ten minutes earlier talking about some of those issues and how they're important and how they're going to come up and going to animate some of these issues, I just want to point out that this is a process where we could capture that and really try to work through it. And that's not just an update. So uh I, count me in the sort of more significant work side. Um, and I just, I'm happy to be the person who raised it and we just kept moving forward that it's just an update, but um I just wanted to say my piece there.
Yeah, and I, I guess just an update Macon wasn't really the right phrase to use. I think there are portions of it that will be you, you know, the whole, it's not going to be re, in my under, I may be wrong, but my guess is that the whole format isn't going to be changed. It's not going to be reformatted. The content, yes, will be updated and some areas will be a more deeper di, a more deep dive into.
Well, like the structure, like the section and some of that, sure. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I'm in, I'm, I'm, I'm open. I just wanted to raise that there's some significant issues that I'd love to address as part of it.
Yeah, we could put in a post pandemic line item.
And on the flip side, I am over, over the moon about having help with it, you know, as. And on the flip side, I am over, over the moon about having help with it, you know, as someone who's really struggled to like follow through on some of these things. So love the idea of being able to work with someone who's really thinking about this in a dedicated way.
I think it's great too. I think what would help, Carol, is if you could send us um, you know, the wor- work, you know, a, a work sample.
Right.
And, and then as we get closer
A proposal?
A proposal. And, and, and that, and then we'll just, we'll, you know, um
Now let me also throw in here
And then do we have to do an R F P? I guess that's my question, or I, does that depend on the proposal amount? And who knows, Carol, maybe you know, uh, like often for state contracts and for town contracts, you have to do, if they're above X, you have to do a competitive bid. I don't remember if we did that for Brandy. Did we, we did that for Brandy, I think, right? But maybe it's only if it's above twenty five thousand dollars.
That I don't know.
I think twenty five is high. I think it's, I think it's lower than that. I'm not sure what Warren's procurement policy is, but I can look into that and
That's a good question.
Get that information to you.
Yeah, at the state level, it was ten thousand, um, and it's been raised to twenty five thousand. I don't know what it is and I don't recall what it is in Warren. But what, regardless, I mean, um, I think it's exciting that, really exciting that you've expressed interest. And, um, so, I, I'm, I'm just not clear. What, what's the, what's Carol proposing? What, what is helping?
To basically
Kind of, I'm kind of, sorry, go ahead, Ruth.
No, no, please.
I'd like to hear Carol.
Um, it's, up, revising the town plan is something in my experience that takes somebody to be kind of a lead organizer to lead rewriting the document, to lead the discussions, to just help determine ways to get public input into the plan. And that's, that's the role that I'm kind of proposing that I would take on for you.
If Brandy took it on for us last time.
Yes.
Bear in mind, there's a timing thing here in that this is two zero twenty five. We have just a little over two years before our current one expires, because that was done in two thousand nineteen uh, in April is when it was stamped, you know, done. And we probably need to have something from Carol soon, if you want her to do any work for you in two zero twenty five. Because we've got to put it somewhere in the budget.
Yeah.
We're cutting it close.
All right, well, we should put something in the budget, so I guess
So
One thought is what, you know
I just, I'm just saying that, that it's not something that we can do later. In other words, um, hopefully Carol can get something to us within the next week to ten days, if not sooner. And give us an idea of a budget. And we should come springtime, really kind of start looking at what we want to do, because it's gonna take you a good year. Maybe a year and a half, depending on just how much you really want to change, update, whatever.
Well, we welcome, I mean, the short, the short answer is we welcome a proposal, and it sounds like we welcome a proposal quickly, and we do have to figure out if we have to do, if we have to select
I mean, I've already submitted the budget.
Okay.
Um, so I'd have to go back in and see if the select board would accept additional funds.
We have two years. I mean, really, the major work is gonna happen next year anyway.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, you do have two years.
We could do a lot of internal discussion and get really clear about what we want and like present it all to her for work in two zero twenty six.
Then hire her next year to tie it all together and present it.
If, if this like, I mean, but why not ask if this like, if we get
Well, let's see, let's see what Carol's proposal is like.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe, maybe look at it as starting maybe in the middle of the year, so it's only a half a year that we get started. I don't want us to get
Yeah, we don't want to get jammed.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Cause it
The, for those who haven't been through the process of the town plan, it's much less painful than the land you can develop with the regular base. In some ways, it's a more there's a bunch of statutory things. Your town plan must include X, Y, and Z, must talk about these issues. It's somewhat aspirational in that, you know, these are our, the town's goals and objectives and the strategies of how we're gonna get there. When we went through it the last round, our old version had lots of stuff that we proved late, like over time it had included
A lot of history that was not really necessary. It's not, it was, it was, it became somewhat of a historical document.
Right.
And, and along with it being a town
And, and Brandy's point was that's not the way town plans, they're not his, they're not the repositories of town history anymore.
Yeah.
They should be a reasonably concise working document that you can use.
Which is why she did such a different format.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's great, Carol. Thank you. Very, very exciting to hear.
Thanks, and I'll, I'll put something together and get it to you within a week.
Awesome, awesome.
Perfect.
And I'm sure we'll have further conversations as, once, once we get your proposal, I'm sure we'll have further conversations as a planning commission.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sure people have questions. Um, M R V P D news, let's see. Yeah, we're working on our, our work plan, or we've, 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 you know, we finalized our budget, we have our work plan. Um, again, Joshua will be spending significant amounts of time helping Waitsfield with their wastewater project. Um, as far as, um, what Warren's specific work they've committed to do and, and that's included in the work plan includes assistance with short analysis of short term rental data and helping us, uh, manage that relationship with, not manage, but I don't know if manage is the right word, but provide data analysis and use Granicus data and help us in any way they can. That's mostly Sam Robinson who's offering to do that. And, um, as you heard with Joshua and Sam coming, they're very excited about trying to help us move the ball forward on, on, in affordable, some sort of affordable housing project in Warren. So, um, they've committed to those. Those are both in their work, in their work plan. Um, and, uh, it's, you know, excited and grateful for their help. Um, and that's the M R V P D update. Oh, and I'll be inviting the planning, or we've invited the planning commissions, if other planning, Faceden and Faceden and Waitsfield planning commissions may, some may join our, Joshua and Sam when they're here.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I said, why not, you know, we brought, we mentioned it at the, at the M R V P D and said, why not?
Our meetings are always open.
They're open and, hey, we have, rather than having Josh and Sam having to do, you know, maybe they can learn something from us, so they may be joining.
J B from Waitsfield and myself from Warren, we're on the, the Faceden PC.
Okay.
Meeting earlier.
Do you want to take on the issue of town paths?
Uh, trails?
Town trails, yes.
Town trails, yeah, that was, was interesting. Um, I, I'll have a couple of comments with you, Carol, at the end of the meeting.
I've heard it's been papered. Um, so I prefer that we don't, we have enough to worry about. Okay. I can see that, um, if the time is eight twenty one and, uh, eyelids are getting droopy. Uh, any other business? No, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. One second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.